Are we all there? Welcome to the August fifteenth specials session. Of the Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation Conservation District. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a roll call. Chris, I guess you're doing roll call today.
Hey, Mr. Higgins.
Present.
Mr. Mark.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Mr. Newman.
Here.
And President Dale.
Here. Chris, will you sign the pledge?
I would lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this portion of our agenda, we we allow public comment for items not on the agenda. If you would like to make public comment regarding items that are not on the agenda, now is your time. Please indicate your desire to speak by either raising your hand or speaking up. Is anyone in the audience here to comment on items not on the agenda? I don't see anyone. So we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Second, a motion and a second for the consent calendar.
President, we have a request to move item seven B before consent, if possible.
Before consent?
Yeah, so it can be heard.
Can we vote on consent? Because I think we're just gonna.
I apologize. I'm not certain of order. That was just a note I received earlier in the.
Yeah, I got that too. I was gonna put it before the rest of the the rest of the items, but I was going to do that or do consent.
So we could pull it.
So we'll do a roll call vote on consent then?
Well, yeah, any comments?
What are we doing? Less item B or on everything?
No, it's seven B.
Or seven, oh, seven B.
Seven.
Under new business, we were gonna move item seven B.
I misunderstood.
We're gonna move that up in front of communications reports and correspondence.
Gotcha.
Um. Roll, uh, roll call vote on consent calendar.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Mark. Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
And President Dale.
Yes. So we have been requested to move in order for our council. Um, who's got some other business he needs to attend to this afternoon. Um, we've been asked to move item seven B um, to the next agenda item, move it up in front of uh, item number five, communication, reports and correspondence. So can I get a motion from someone to move item seven? Got a motion and second? All in favor? Oh, do we need a roll call on everything still?
Well, you should be able to just move something, though. It's more president, but I guess we already have a motion.
Greg. Greg, you can, you can go, you can go ahead and move it. Um, and if you want to just make it the first business item, I'm, I, I've got time to stay through reports and communications, and we can just do it as the first business item, if that works for, for the commission.
That works for me, Ryan.
Yeah, I've got, I've got time. So, um, if you just want to do it as the first business item, that would be fine.
Well, it all depends on how much time it takes our executive director to give his report.
I have nothing to report. I'm gonna pass it on to Chris.
Um. Larry, you wanna take it away with, uh, communications, reports, correspondence received?
Yes, I have nothing to report. I'm gonna turn it over to Chris.
Okay. Um, any staff reports, Chris?
Yeah, we just have one slide for you this evening on our PowerPoint. Um, so recently, uh, we could go Sunday. We finally have our first trans. There we go. Thank you, Mindy. So, uh, a week ago Sunday, we had our first cable land. And so these are just some photos of the scene. Uh, it was a bit of a day. It was supposed to be land about twelve forty-five and ended up landing about twelve hours thereafter. But in any event, you can see a little bit of the work on the scene. The ship's out at work, the spotter ship as well as the divers, and just thought it was worthy to report that we finally, uh, have cable land.
Woo-hoo!
We're moving forward.
Yeah, awesome.
Okay, that is, is that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Did anyone like hook up to it and play some video games with Singapore yet?
I, I don't know, but I'm sure we'll be hearing more from RTI and as the days go on and Connie was there. She was very happy to, to, to see the success.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
Good for them. Good work.
Yep, thank you. Um, I'm assuming that there's no district council or treasurer reports.
Nothing from council tonight.
Any commissioner and committee reports?
Sure.
Karen? Yeah.
Well, I'm not a lot to report. Salmon season for me commercially has ended, and I'm moving into longlining for Black Cod. Other than that, I attended our pilot committee hearing, which was, I thought, was very good. And we'll be talking about, talking about that tonight. And I also met with former city council member Chad Almond about uh, the future of cruise ships in Humboldt and some pretty hopeful stuff there too, so. Lots of stuff on our plate. That's it for me.
Thanks, Commissioner Newman. Commissioner Coleman. Uh, you got on, you just got back from vacation.
Yeah, so I went and visited some really nice harbors and marinas in Sicily, but other than that, or don't have, uh, don't have much to report.
Cause I sent you.
Thank you.
It's been nice over there.
Faded by now.
Yeah, I heard it was hot.
It was very hot. We got there right, right at the tail end of the heat wave. But it was funny, the thermometer only said like forty, so I don't know why it felt so hot.
I heard that you, I heard that it, the minute you walked outside, you just evaporated. That's the way it was described to me. Commissioner Marks?
Uh, yeah, I, I took a ride on the Timber Heritage Speeder Ride. Um, and I saw that there is the auto rammer going on out of Peninsula. Uh, lots of, uh, people down at the boat ramp that were using it for ATV. My son brought up his banshee, blew it up. And, uh, so he didn't have too much fun. It cost him a bit of money to be here. The weather was perfect all week for everything on the peninsula, so it was a good week.
Good, good. Commissioner Higgins?
Well, I got out and got myself a twenty-seven pound halibut before they shut it down with EJ seven oh seven sport fishing. The wharf rat two. He's got little rats on pontoons next to his boat. Kind of a odd come, uh, you know, kind of promotional gig, but, uh, he's a great guy. And his son was out and his son's gonna go over to Chico. He's gonna study how to weld. Uh, he's gotta go to, over to community college there. I think we need more trade stuff at CR. Uh, but, um, then I went out of arena and it was supposed to be giant fish. And it was, instead of being krill-filled waters and salmon turning everywhere, there was doll's porpoises going through the surface and diving under our boat and then hooking up to our trolling gear and taking all our line. But then they got unhooked, so it was a happy ending. Saw mola mola, saw, uh, humpback whales, uh, saw, um, oh, there was another one, um, hmm, blue whale. So I mean, arena was like the tropics on the day I went there. And I caught no fish, but I wouldn't trade it. Uh, but the ocean is really kind of funny. It's going back and forth. So there's no salmon out front here right now. Uh, but I've got a ticket on the real steel, so I'll take rockfish down at the Cape if I can get it and but I guess the tuna are in close, and I've never done that. So I think I'm up to it. So, uh, life is good. Your bureaucratic frustrations with the ill-recovery. Thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. I, I I don't have much to report. I, I also participated in the, the, um, pilots, pilot committee, subcommittee meeting, and, and it looks, looks promising. Looks like we're gonna have a few people applying for that. Um, there's some challenges there, but I think we were, uh, we're gonna be okay. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot to report. I have a new grandchild, so I've been playing with her quite a bit. She's pretty cute. But other than that, I, I'm good.
Cuter than you.
Very much cuter than me. Have we received any correspondence? No correspondence. Okay, so Ryan, we don't have any unfinished business, and you are the, you are the first of our new business. Tell us about our, consider what we need to know to consider approval of earnest money funding agreement or and grant of assignment and purchase options.
Yeah, thanks. And so a, as the commission will recall, the Humboldt Bay Development Association recently entered into a purchase and sale agreement uh, with Samoa Pacific Group LLC to acquire the, I think it's thirty-six acres adjacent to RMT one. Um, and that's an agreement between the Development Association and Samoa Pacific Group. The district is not a party to that particular agreement. Uh, by way of the agreement on the agenda tonight, um, we, staff is recommending that the commission approve an agreement with the Humboldt Bay Development Association that would do a few things. Uh, one, it would, um, provide the Development Association the fifty thousand dollar earnest money deposit that's required under the purchase and sale agreement. It would grant the harbor district the right at its election to take an assignment of the purchase and sale agreement and acquire the property on its own. Or, um, after the Humboldt Bay Development Association acquires the property, uh, the right to purchase the property from the Humboldt Bay Development Association um, for the price the Development Association paid for it. The fifty thousand dollars, um, that the district would be providing to the association would be credited against the purchase price in the event that the district either takes an assignment or purchases the property. Or in the event the Development Association does not go through with escrow, uh, the fifty thousand dollars would be returned as an earnest money deposit back to the district. Um, and so, um, I'm sure Larry can provide some more background as to the reasons for doing this, but this provides um, the district, uh, the right to take an assignment and acquire it itself or post-closing purchase the property from the Development Association, all related to the district's port development uh, project that is ongoing.
Thanks, Ryan. The question from the commission. Comment.
Well, of course, the Humboldt Bay Development Association was initiated, uh, for the new market tax credit that has run its course. Uh, but it remains a good tool for flexible partnership here to help, uh, more things happen on the peninsula than the harbor could. And this is a, uh, a good way for us to maybe get, uh, the property acquired at grant funds, so, uh, I think it's a depth work of our staff, and I am highly approving of the concept.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks for your service on that board too. Um, Mr. Mark? Any comments?
I'm ready.
Commissioner Coleman?
Uh, yeah, no additional remarks, just that this is another needed step in our you know, the great progress that we're doing on preparing for development of the port.
Great. Is there any, so I'm gonna take it to the public now?
I'll move.
Oh, I don't have a motion. Sorry, motion from Commissioner Newman, second from Mr. Coleman? Thank you. Thanks, Mindy. We've had, uh, any public comment regarding this item? Please signify by raising your hand or speaking out. See none? Chris, I'd like a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
And President Dale?
Yes. All right, Ryan, you're free and clear.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
You as well. All right, we're gonna go back to item seven A and reserve, see, receive a report and provide direction regarding the potential to enter into a project labor agreement regarding the development of the new heavy lift marine terminal to support offshore wind industry.
So I will go ahead and give this report.
You can talk, Larry?
Yes, I am. Uh, so the, as we, we've been discussing for a long time, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management is going to be issuing a lease for the eight, approximately thirty miles offshore, uh, this fall. And that we're focused on building a new heavy lift terminal in the ports. And so there's really a complete differentiation between what the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management has been doing and then what we're working on doing, uh, in the port. But with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, one of the key pieces that they're looking at is doing um, what's called by community benefits. How can we get as much community benefit as we can as offshore wind develops? And so the harbor district, we're focused on the same thing on the port side of the equation. Not only do we want to build a new heavy lift terminal, but at the same time, we want to bring as much benefits as we can to the community. And so as we know, this new heavy lift terminal is gonna be a very, very expensive project. And it, it's gonna require well in excess of thirty-five million dollars of federal, uh, grant funding assistance. And there's an executive order that was passed by President Biden in, in February that said, if you have over thirty-five million dollars worth of federal funds in your project, then you're required to do a project labor agreement. We've been discussing and been planning to do a project labor agreement even without, uh, President Biden's, uh, announcement because there's a number of benefits that we believe that would come from this project. And so there's an executive order, and we will be required to have one if we receive over thirty-five million. But it's our position, my position, that we're more likely to get the federal money if we partner up with, uh, the, and do a project labor agreement. We're also more likely the labor that we need in order to build the new terminal and have more people hired locally if we have a project labor agreement. Um, and then we're also more likely to hire some of the Native American, uh, communities and also potentially have geographic uh, hiring preferences for the people in the town of Samoa, potentially Manila and Fairhaven, the ones that might be the most impacted by the project. So there's a wide variety of benefits to doing a project labor agreement. And I really wanted to thank Commissioner Marks for really bringing this to our attention and been highlighting this for some time. In San Francisco, in the offshore wind, uh, energy conference, um, and then also later on here in Humboldt, uh, you know, the president of the union came and gave presentations on, um, of the president of the state of California unions came and really gave us presentations and made a clear case for why we should really, uh, consider entering into a project labor agreement uh, on this project. And so we've been having a number of discussions here locally with the, uh, labor unions, with, uh, the county of Humboldt, the, uh, Humboldt Dairy Foundation, some of the, the Native American tribes and some other partners that we have in the region about what are the community benefits that we can bring to the, the, the community? And we think that the first and foremost one that's gonna, that's gonna come to for us is gonna be this project labor agreement. If that's ultimately the decision of the, the board. And so in order to get all of this money, we really have to have a broad tent, and we're gonna have to have the support of the labor unions, the communities, the environmental community, the whole broad spectrum of people in order to be successful, uh, in this operation. And so therefore, uh, my recommendation to the board is to direct staff to work with the, uh, the, the offshore wind subcommittee and meet with the labor unions and see if we can come up with a, uh, a project labor agreement. And then to ultimately bring that project labor agreement back to the harbor district for consideration. And so overarching kind of the timeframe, uh, that we're looking for here is, in the big picture, we're going to be applying for, um, a port infrastructure development grant funding. And we anticipate that that's gonna be in approximately May of twenty twenty-three. And with that grant, we're gonna be applying for in excess of fifty million dollars for that project. And if we're successful in that project, then we're, that would trigger us getting the project labor agreement. But what we believe is that if we get a project labor agreement earlier than that, then we can use the, the team and our, our cooperation that we have with the labor unions to go and attract some state money that we can also help to, uh, leverage the, the, the federal money. And so I'm gonna kind of, uh, be quiet at this point and just say my recommendation is that you direct, uh, staff to, to, and the offshore wind subcommittee to meet with the labor unions and see if we can come up with a, a project labor agreement that is the best for the, the harbor district and is the best for the community.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Newman?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of this. I, I think it's like the last item. I think it's the right next move, um, in the development, I think, working uh, early with the unions and the labor community is appropriate, and so, uh, I'm all in favor of doing this.
Mr. Marks?
Well, President Dale and I got an opportunity to talk to the president of the Building Trades for California and gave a little speech, you know, a few months back on how they, they could help and be more of a support role if we took on and, you know, some more supportive of, you know, push for this, and I, perfect timing, I think we're, we're, obviously it's gonna be a mandate from the top. And so this, this is all good for us, and it's gonna be great for labor. And it's good that we have partners that can help us, you know, wade through this, uh, process of garnering more money from beds.
My daddy was a labor organizer, longshoreman, when they got beat on the head for it. I'm for labor. And, uh, I'd like to hear from, I, I see we have some of the folks from, uh, labor uh, in the audience, and I would like to hear from them, but I'm favorable, uh, in consideration of this item.
Thanks, Pat.
Without the floggings?
Yeah, no floggings. No, I, I just flog, Pat?
Clock him over the head a couple times just for good measure.
Pat? Pat or Jeff?
Oh, Pat.
Okay, yeah. Um, no, I think, I think, you know, Richard, we did meet with, uh, with Andrew, um, and and it's, it, there's no, there's no discussion that there's gonna be a project labor agreement. It's just a matter of when you do it, and I think now is the time to do it. Um, so let's, let's put this together. Um, so I think that's all from the commission. Any public would like to discuss this item? Jeff, please unmute yourself.
Thanks, Dale. Through the chair. Uh, thank you all the commissioners. So look, I, I, Andrew, uh, isn't on the call tonight, but what, uh, in the conversation, the things he said are very true. I just wanted to let the board and the public know uh, what the Humboldt Del Norte Building and Construction Trades, uh, bring to the table. But first, I'm Jeff Hunter Lock with the Operating Engineers Local Three. I'm also, uh, the Secretary Treasurer for the Humboldt Del Norte Building and Construction Trades, uh, a delegate to the State Building Trades and on the PAC Committee there. So the good news, guys, uh, is the things we bring to the table. And it's not just, when we say labor, it's not just for labor unions, it's for the community. It's for pathways. What we bring is, is, uh, first and foremost, we do bring a skilled and trained workforce. And then we provide, uh, a pathway for men, women, ethnic minorities, disadvantaged community areas. And the opportunity for workers who live right here in Humboldt County, uh, a pathway to the middle class, along with our veterans, military veterans. We bring to the table, uh, California-approved MC three pre-apprenticeship, which is a pathway to the apprenticeship, which is a pathway to working on these projects. We can mold this PLA, uh, to the, uh, to help the community. Um, it comes with all of that, plus at the end of the day, we're looking for money in Sacramento, more money. The more money, the better, because that means we can do more here locally, uh, for this offshore wind industry. So politically, uh, I'm not making any promises at all, but having us on board in Sacramento, uh, where the money comes from is, uh, beyond, uh, profitable for Humboldt County. And, uh, we'll fight tooth and nail for every dime, uh, that it takes that we have to get together because we'll be partners. And we really look forward to having that partnership. We really look forward to all of the things, uh, that are gonna come to pass here in the future for Humboldt County. Um, and with that partnership, uh, comes commitment. And, uh, just wanted you to know, look, the local guys, me, I'm the guy you'll be going through, uh, and I'll carry the message and, uh, uh, not just the message, we'll get her done. Uh, because we got a big arm, uh, all the way through, and operating engineers also. So just grateful for the opportunity, and I hope you go with the staff's recommendation, uh, to approve, uh, this moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else care to comment on the development of an project labor agreement? Somebody's got their hand up. Amy Jester? Amy, you're, uh, you're muted. There we go.
I'm unmuted now, yeah?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Amy Jester with the Humboldt Area and Wild River Community Foundation and have been one of the team members at the foundation that's had the opportunity to work with the Redwood Region Climate and Community Resilience Hub, which has been, um, convening a community benefit network, um, around offshore winds to really, uh, think about how we can work together across different interests to really ensure that, um, offshore wind development as an industry happens in a way that's gonna support this place and thriving into the future. Um, one of the, uh, efforts that we, um, did over the last month and a half or so is prepare a, a pretty large comment document to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management outlining a number of benefits, um, that we are recommending that they include in their final sale notice, leasing and auction process for, um, for, you know, how developers elected to develop, um, the, uh, our initial wind farms here. Um, and one of the things that we included, um, and recognize as really critical is the need to include strong PLAs um, as part of what will help this place thrive into the future, much as you all have, have been discussing in, in your comments, um, initially following, um, uh, you know, Larry's, uh, report. Um, some beyond that, some of what we're really, um, hoping that, um, uh, PLAs will have included are, um, our strong targeted hire, uh, groups that include, um, residents that, you know, might be tribal members, black indigenous people of color, non-binary folks, and people with potentially career-limiting circumstances, um, such as, um, income, um, perhaps involvement with the justice system or English language learners, um, as well as workers in the process of applying for residency or citizenship, um, folks with disabilities, single parents, and many others in our community that are really struggling, that need these kind of opportunities in order to ensure that our region is able to thrive into the future. So I was definitely hearing that you all are, you know, in, in favor, it seems like you're in favor of moving this forward, but just wanted to share out that, um, the network of organizations, governments, agencies that we've been working with is. is also in favor of these PLAs and really sees, um, moving forward with them as soon as possible as a critical next step and, and such an important way that the commission would be able to, um, uh, provide leadership in, in moving PLAs forward as, as part of how offshore wind happens here. So thanks so much for the opportunity to comment and for considering this, uh, proposal.
Thank you, Amy. Ms. Stewart, you have your hand up.
Hi there, Connie Stewart with the Humboldt Workforce Coalition in Cal Poly Humboldt. And I just want to cheer you all on and hope you, um, picked the staff's recommendation here. This is a wonderful step, um, and I'm glad you're taking it now. So thanks so much and I'm just here to cheer you.
Thanks, Connie. Any others that would like to speak on this item? So I, I think, uh, I think we're all in agreement, but
question though.
Please.
I think I, I think I know the answer.
Push that forward.
Okay, uh, so the, any project labor agreement that we, uh, negotiate, would that be solely within port development or would we have any influence over at least recommending PLAs for the actual development and, uh, for the developers out in the ocean? Cause I know what we're mainly concentrating on is the port development here. I'm wondering if we have any, uh, sway towards other PLAs for the, the auctions.
Uh, one thing I want to really kind of make clear is that, uh, there's, when we, when we talk in terms of project labor agreement, there will likely be a couple of project labor agreements over the course of the entire the project labor agreement that we're really focused on is during the construction period. So we get the funding and from the federal government and it really, we're do, would be looking at doing a project labor agreement during the entire construction of the new heavy lift terminal. And then once the project is completed, then the next step would be we'd likely enter into a project labor agreement with the longshoreman or other, uh, uh, labor to actually operate the terminal itself. And so that would be for operating the terminal over time. That would be a completely, completely separate project labor agreement. If there is, uh, manufacturing, eventually if we get a manufacturing company to come in and build something, there may be a separate project labor agreement for the manufacturing component of that. Just like there will likely be a, a, an additional project labor agreement that would be for the actual, uh, operation and maintenance of the offshore wind. And so we should really think about the project labor agreement not as being a one-size-fits-all, but really the first of several project labor agreements that are likely to take place over the course of the project. And very similarly, if we look at it within this broader context of community benefits is there's not going to be one community benefit agreement. We're gonna be always looking for ways that we can bring community benefits to the area. And there will, that will come in a whole variety of different forms and it won't be just one agreement. The project labor agreement that we're focused on is purely for the construction period.
Thanks, Larry. Answer your question?
Yeah.
So I, I don't think so either.
No, it's just direction.
And I think our direction is to, to put together, um, I think the offshore wind subcommittee with, uh, I, I, I probably Jeff will bring his folks and, and we'll meet and put something together. And Ryan, Ryan's probably gonna be involved in it as well. The board. No, okay.
Who is our offshore wind subcommittee?
Richard and I. And it meets a lot.
Yes.
Um, thank you guys for your service. But it is, it is interesting and it has been very productive and very, um, dynamic. It's been where the action is. It is fun. Um, okay, so let's move on. You have your direction? You're comfortable with, you're comfortable with your direction, Chris?
Yes, I am. I'm comfortable. Thank you.
Um, item seven C, consider appointing bar pilot apprentices into, that we interviewed at the subcommittee.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second. Larry, you want to talk about this? You want me to do it?
Uh, you could go, you could go ahead. I just want to talk about the, the fees on the next item.
Fees on the next item. Okay. So we met and, and interviewed a, a number of uh, potential candidates for the bar pilot. And currently we have two that have the, or have the
Credentials.
Credentials to do it. Very good candidates. Um, definitely interested, definitely, uh, uh, promising. So I would, I would, uh, I would recommend appointing these two. We have motion, a second, right? Yeah, yeah. Newman is, uh, the motioner and Coleman's the second. Any comments or any other comments from the board?
I think this is great. And I appreciate you guys kind of putting time in so that we can rebuild this capacity. It's like you can't make money at a port if you don't have.
Oh, it's our, it's our, it's, I mean, we already had one incident this year that, that probably could use the pilot, um, and
They don't let us put them on barges.
Well, that, that, that may not be up to anybody but us, but the, the point is, is these guys do a good job and, and they're I hate to say it, how do I say this politically correctly? They're not getting any younger. We need to start training some, train some people to do it. Um, so, and they're, you know, these are, these are stand-up people that want to do this with lots with experience. So it's good to have people like that in our port. Any other comments from the board? I'll take it to the public. Anybody from the public wish to con, comment on appointing bar pilots? Nobody wants to. So I have a motion, a second. Apprentices, it's into the apprentice program.
The way it just from my understanding, since I'm likely to ask questions, uh, what's the apprentice program consist of? How long does the apprentice program last?
Well, they have to complete their master pilot training with the Coast Guard to get the pilots, the actual pilots license and they have to be approved by us. And the Coast Guard having had a number of round trips and activity with the current pilots. And it's just, it's substantial. It'll take a couple, three, three years for these individuals to acquire that many trips because of the very few we have. So it, it's, it's very extensive and, you know, these guys are the, drive these seven hundred foot ships in here. So it's, it's, it's very important and these are really good candidates.
Yeah, it is. It's, and, and, uh, the, the number of trips we have, we're working on, on increasing the capacity, not, actually not we're working on increasing shipping all the time, but some options for them to get their round trips in a different manner than just on the, the chips, ships that we have coming, ships that we have coming. Um, but it, I, for me, I, I was describing this to my wife the other night and I was saying it's kind of like um, driving your Suburban into your single garage, your single car garage and turning it around inside the garage and driving it back out. It's just, it's technical and tight and these guys are the boss. I mean, they, they, uh, they do it, they do it well. We don't have problems here. So we're grateful for that.
Remind me to tell you about the plus, uh, four E and S.
We'll do that after, we'll do that after the meeting. Yeah, sounds like, sounds like the, uh, the pilots could do that. So I have a motion, a second. No comments from the public. Roll call.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
And President Dale?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to item seven D, consider adopting resolution twenty twenty-two dash ten, amending the fee schedule of the Humboldt, of the Harbor District Properties and Operations. Chris or Larry, who's talking about this?
I'll go ahead and do this one, uh, just briefly, is so we're, before you is the fee resolution that we have, uh, and so there's basically a resolution and then there's, uh, attachments A through F. And one of the attachments is really is the, the tariff schedule for Redwood Marine Terminal One. And this is something that, uh, you may not have seen for a couple of years, uh, but it was, it was adopted by the board in two thousand and fifteen. Um, and it really lays out all the details of what the specific fees that we anticipated were going to be charged when ships pull up to Redwood Marine Terminal One. And so reason why, um, I'm highlighting this and bringing this to your attention is when we construct a brand-new heavy lift terminal, these are the fees that we currently have for the, the terminal, but over the course of the next couple of years, we're gonna be closely looking at the fee schedule as this terminal goes into play and we're going to be, uh, reviewing the fee schedules from other ports. And we'll be coming to the board with some recommended changes. Right now, we have, uh, the United States Environmental Protection Agency has been helping us, not only with the brownfield contamination, but they're also providing us technical assistance. And as part of their consultants that, that they've hired at no charge at all to us is, uh, they have consultants ADAPTDA and they've given us, um, eleven fee schedules from other ports in the East Coast and Europe. And we're currently reviewing those fee schedules, uh, that were focused on the offshore wind industry in the East Coast and Europe. And then we'll be coming back with modifications to our fee schedule over the course of the, the next year. So two fees in particular that I wanted to highlight is that number one, the, um, in the last agenda item, we talked about the bar pilots apprentice. Well, one of the things that the subcommittee has been discussing is there's two stages when we have bar pilots. The first is really is just the apprentice and it's gonna take, as Commissioner Newman said, it's gonna take about two years to, just to get through and all you're doing is you're just riding along on the ship. You're not actually piloting the ship at all for those first, uh, twenty round trip. Uh, you're not driving the ship at all. And so what we're looking at doing is establishing some sort of a stipend for when they get into what's the second stage of the apprenticeship program, which is called the observing apprentice. And on that stage, what's happening is they're actually, uh, piloting the ship, but the existing bar pilots are right there with them and observing everything that they're doing, um, to make sure that they're doing it, uh, correctly. And so, uh, what we are starting to do is look at other jurisdictions and another, uh, a number of other ports. They have established an apprentice fee for each ship that comes into the port. And then they use those apprentice fees in order to attract new recruits, uh, into the apprenticeship program. And so we don't currently have a fee that we have outlined on this. I'm really just highlighting this to you because this is something that we're also looking at with these bar pilots of maybe establishing a bar pilot, uh, apprentice fee. The second item that I wanted to highlight is that we've been working over the course of the last couple of years. And actually, we've made pretty good progress, uh, given that, uh, COVID is here on cruise ships and attracting cruise ships into the port. We had one earlier this year and we have another one, uh, in September that's coming. And this is when the cruise ships are at their biggest downturn and we have two cruise, uh, cruise ships coming into, to port this year. Um, we had five that we had scheduled, but a couple of them had to back out and it wasn't anything to do with Humboldt. It was, uh, just the nature of cruise ships in the age of COVID that we're in. And so one of the things that we've been having discussions with the city of Eureka, the county of Humboldt and the harbor district is, is there a way that we can have some funds to help to pay for some marketing of cruise ships? And when the, we look at cruise ships from the port, you know, most, when you get to a certain number of cruise ships, then you start to bring money, uh, you start to really make money. But for the port of Humboldt, what we're really focused on is we need to keep our bar, bar pilots, our tugboat operators, our longshoremen, all of these other entities, the support facilities working. And cruise ships having two, three, four, or five cruise ships a year really provides good wages and, uh, good employment for our maritime community that keeps them active. And so I think, uh, Chad Albin is here, uh, and again, we don't have a specific fee in the fee schedule, but there's a line item for us to consider establishing some sort of a cruise ship fee. And again, what most ports do is when cruise ships come into town, that they charge a fee. And we've looked at Astoria, San Francisco, San Diego, and some of the other West Coast ports and have started to put together, what do they charge with their fees? Now with those ports, the fees are typically charged in the terminal where they land. And so because they've, the only two terminals that they've landed in recent years has been the Snyder Terminal and also the Fairhaven Terminal. So all the revenue basically goes to those terminals. And thus far, we've not been able to get any revenue to support the, the marketing efforts. Um, we're members of Cruise the West and, uh, the Bruce Connor works out of Astoria has been really a great help to the Port of Humboldt Bay through our Cruise the West membership. And so I'm bringing this up because I think that in our efforts to attract a wide variety of ships into port, cruise ships have truly become a, uh, you know, not the panacea, but they're really a good, stable, uh, source of income for the bar pilots, longshoremen, tugboat operators, and just generally the maritime support community. And so if you're interested, then, um, I would like to continue to work with, uh, Eureka and Humboldt County to see if we could, uh, possibly come up with a me, a stable mechanism so that we could have, uh, a fee schedule. So if the chair would allow, I'd like to, to let Chad Albin say a couple of words.
Uh, thank you, Larry. Uh, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, as Larry indicated, we're working with the city and the county and the harbor district to come up with some marketing, uh, money to hire somebody to, uh, actually market uh, to the cruise ship industry. As, uh, Larry indicated, we're members of Cruise the West and they are consortium of all the West Coast, uh, cruise ship ports and we all market together. And, um, for example, Astoria, Oregon, uh, for the year of twenty twenty-three already has twenty-six ships already booked to go into that harbor. Of those twenty-six ships, twelve of those are under eight hundred feet. So twelve ships that are, are going up and down our coast now would fit into Eureka. And, uh, so that would add to what Larry just mentioned, the fact that, you know, we have four or five ships coming in would really benefit us in terms of all the different labor things that are taking place in the harbor, but also for, to add to the fees that, uh, the harbor district couldn't hit. So, um, and Larry indicated, you know, tug fees and pilot fees and keeping all these people, uh, busy and, and, uh, bringing more revenue into the, into the port. Um, we are also in discussion with other groups. We're hoping to get, uh, raise some funds from the city, from the harbor district and from the county, and we're in discussion with them recently and they are, uh, very interested in participating there. And then we need to go out and find somebody to market. Uh, I would correct Larry on one thing, we have two more ships coming in in September. The Oceana Regatta, uh, on, uh, September fourteenth and the, uh, Scenic Eclipse on, uh, September twenty-fourth. And, um, so anyway, um, we're hoping to raise that money and then we want to hire somebody. Where right now, we are looking with Bruce Connor up in Oregon, who is gonna market for us and possibly or he already markets for Astoria, but, uh, possibly hiring him to market for us. And, uh, we're in that discussion now. Any questions?
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
We have a motion?
So move. Yeah, we're not.
Well, we're adopting a resolution.
Our fee schedule, but there's, there's items on the fee schedule that we're hoping to change, but we still need to adopt the fee schedule. My understanding is the fee schedule needs to be adopted. We haven't adopted it this year.
Okay.
So this is our chance to adopt the schedule. We can modify that fee schedule at a later date, which we will. I think this year especially for. For the pilots, the pilot subcommittee is going to have some recommendations for you. And then potentially for some sort of fee for cruise ships, cruise ships. We're not going to make this the 14th to the 24th for this year, but in the future we'll, we'll, we'll probably have something.
And so does the resolution now, and I'm sorry because I don't have it in front of me, does it, are we amending any fees this time? Are we adopting the existing fees with the idea of amending?
There's, there's no fees asking you to adopt any fees for bar pilot apprentice or the cruise ship at this time. We're just bringing that up because we'd like to consider it at the future.
There are some cool increases on the fee schedule that are. So many, many informed us that there's two, two items that are be, there are two fees that are changing. There's a pilot fuel surcharge and a, hold on Richard, okay, I got you, I see you're waving. And we have a forklift, an increase on our forklift charge. Okay. Add some clarification of wording in the, in the fee schedule. Mr. Marks?
I'll make a correction. I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution 2022-10.
Have a motion and second, Commissioner Marks, motion, Commissioner Higgins, second. Any other discussion comments? Any comments from the public regarding our fee schedule? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. No more, no more additional comments. Chris?
My only comment would be I'd like to see those other things as soon as possible. The apprentice fees for pilots and for cruise ship. Something per passenger or something that could fund this. Mechanism to advertise our port for cruise ships. I think it's a really good idea. See that as soon as possible.
Okay, so, so would you say that we, we have, we've got a number of subcommittees? Would you say that that, where, where would that fit best in? Would that fit best in? Because we're going to be already working on it from the pilot side. Can we just do the, we do it in that subcommittee?
I think so.
I think so too. Does everybody agree? You don't want a new subcommittee to deal with?
To be the pilot and cruise ship committee.
Yeah, okay. We'll take that on. Is that okay with you, Larry?
Yeah, I think we should just call it the pilot and shipping community and that way it would be anything to do with bringing vessels into the port.
Okay, perfect. So we'll, we'll, we'll take that on right away.
We'll get something going for the next meeting even.
Yeah, because we got to get on this, we got to get on it for these, these apprentices as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and second. Roll call.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
President Dale?
Yes. All right, that is the end of our regular agenda. I see Royal, Royal is on here, Royal McCarthy is on here. We are scheduled to meet with Royal on the 1091. Correct Larry?
That is correct. I believe it's next week, I believe.
Yeah, next week from Thursday.
Okay, so that'll, that'll be on our.
From Wednesday, excuse me.
Thanks Royal. Any other agenda items that you guys would like to see? Okay. I am going to adjourn meeting. Everybody have a wonderful week and a good month.